Call the City Council meeting to order. Please call and roll.
Mayor Williams?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Clay?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Sniffer?
Here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens will be here shortly. First agenda item is council comments. If I can do a couple of quick ones, I'll try and do them quickly enough and maybe my colleagues will follow my example and go lickety-split through the various comments. I just want to remind everybody that it's still the prime time to turn in census forms. I haven't been on the website in the last couple of days to see if the city's response rate is up any, but it was lagging, so we need everybody to return their census forms. And it's really important because it means money for the city, money for the county, and in these budget times, every dollar helps. The second thing is, I'll be testifying tomorrow night at the county council at the budget hearing, and I think my colleague's got the draft of remarks, and if you've got any comments, let me know. I'll need to know by noon tomorrow, because I've got office hours tomorrow, and so I won't be revising them once I get in here. And one other quick thing I just wanted to mention, as I read the draft minutes for consideration this evening, one of the things I saw was comments by a couple of my colleagues about not voting for the funding for the survey, the city survey. And it struck me that I know that those same colleagues had voiced their concerns about spending for that, but actually, when we did vote on that item to award that, that it was a consent agenda item, so that technically, in the end, everybody voted for that. So if there are consent agenda items that are on in the future, and it's something that you want to make sure that your no voice is made note of at the very end of the process, rather than just going, "No, I don't think we should do this," and then voting yes on the consent agenda, let me know. I'll pull it off the consent agenda, and you can vote no. That's it. Councilmember Ray?
I think council -- I wasn't one of those council members, but I think they may have been referring to, I think that was one of our straw poll items in the budget.
Yes.
So I think they may have been referring to, when it was actually come up, when it came up for whether it would be in the budget or not, they had voted against it. And maybe since they knew the majority of people supported it, they didn't ask to have it come off the consent agenda.
Could be, and that's why I said, if it was important. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Sniffer? You wanted to go, now you're eating.
I know. Sorry about that. Wanted to tell folks I missed last week's meeting because I was in El Salvador. I was on a delegation unofficially, just a personal trip with a delegation from the Washington office on Latin America to commemorate the 30th anniversary of the assassination of Archbishop Oscar Romero, as well as to look at the human rights and legal rights situation in El Salvador today. A number of fairly high-level folks on this delegation, people who have worked on Central America issues with El Salvador for many decades. Very impressive group. We met with a lot of people, high government officials down to peasants, and I could talk a long time about what I learned from that, but I want to discuss just three things that really apply to Tacoma Park. First, quite a number of people know Tacoma Park. I was very pleased to hear that when I mentioned I was from Tacoma Park on the city council, I got quite a bit of very favorable reaction from folks. They knew where Tacoma Park was, and they were very happy about Tacoma Park. The second thing I want to say is that I had a meeting in which, that was a meeting of community activists concerned about mining that is being proposed in El Salvador, and at that meeting were some folks from Santa Marta. And Tacoma Park had an active relationship with Santa Marta in El Salvador as a sister I know Mark Elrich went to Santa Marta, maybe other council members went on other occasions. They're doing pretty well. They would be interested in revising or reviving that sister-city relationship. If that were something that we wanted to do, of course, we'd have to do it officially. I was speaking totally unofficially and said so. But it's something that I would like to have the council talk about a little bit, about whether we want to or not revive a sister-city relationship. The third thing I want to talk about is a perspective on immigration, Salvadorans in particular. There are some, I've heard numbers, on the order of 600,000 Salvadorans in the Washington area. Many of them went back to El Salvador to vote in the election last year. There's a very Obama-like president now. And we heard from a variety of people whose perspective on immigration has shifted from the previous government's view. The previous government was very laissez-faire about the impact of migration to the United States and back. And the new government and the people we talked to really are interested in moving away from the model in which roughly a quarter of their population is living in the United States and sending money back, sending remittances back, that it has a lot of negative consequences for El Salvador, has a lot of positive consequences for El Salvador. It's roughly 18 percent of their GDP. But I just want to let the community know that there are people in El Salvador who are thinking very seriously about how to improve educational opportunities, improve employment opportunities, particularly for young people in El Salvador. On the one hand, to keep people in El Salvador, and second, to reach out to people here to help them negotiate a return, if that's what they want to do. And this is in contrast, I just want to be clear, this is in contrast to some of the previous attitudes, ideas, and so on that was encountered there. And they also, of course, were strongly supportive of comprehensive immigration reform in the United States, although they were incredibly clear. I couldn't get anyone to say, "Well, if you had an idea for what that would mean concretely, how about sharing it with me?" Nobody would tell me, because they really do not want to interfere in, you know, what is essentially the decision that the United States has to make. So they are very much watching and waiting, but they are not just doing nothing. And I'll stop there. And if anyone wants to talk to me about any of the other things, I'd be happy to chat about it.
Thank you. No comments. That's my report.
See, I have three comments, and they're all activities for you to do, Barb.
I welcome them, Councilmember Clay.
Good. So I went and did a walk of the Forest Park perimeter to look at the fence, and I was surprised, actually. Have you been out there?
Not really.
Was surprised by how much of that gentleman's fence burned. I thought it was a small localized fire, and, oh my God. You know, it's measured in the tens of feet, maybe. I don't know if it's 100 feet of fence, but wow. The reason I was up there is because I've been getting a variety of messages from folks in Forest Park, some of whom want to have a fence installed and some of whom don't. I can sum up the people who want a fence installed as property owners along Woodland Avenue or Elm or Prince George's in one case, who don't want people who are attracted to coming to the park to make the assumption that the property all the way up is common property, but also they have a lot of wildlife in there, and they don't necessarily want to fence off every single property because the wildlife, they do have a habitat in there that would be degraded if every single one of them put in full-on fencing. And the other folks are folks who want to use what is essentially other people's private property, some with the permission of some of the private property owners. So for example, there are some private property owners, maybe halfway up, who have told folks that they're welcome to come use the common woods, but that's not necessarily the understanding of the other people who have this sort of common agreement. So I think maybe we should call a meeting of the folks who have property that borders that, and it would be great if the city planning staff could prep that and notice it so that we could have a meeting with them to discuss it. So that's one. And the second one is, it would be good to get an update on what's happening with the property at, I can't remember, on Ethan Allen in the 300 block on the Even side, you know what I'm talking about? I've been asked by a couple of the surrounding neighbors about what's happening with that, just kind of squatters on the property and off the property and all that kind of thing. And the third piece is that I got a notice from the planning department that they were going to send out a letter to the folks on Central and Garland about the grant that they had received to install a sidewalk along Central and a portion of Garland for the Safe Roadways to School project, and let folks in the community know that was coming. And there's a lot of interest in it. There's, I think, a lot of support for sidewalks, and then there's some people who are concerned about the sidewalks. And so my message is, the sooner that we could get the information about what side of the street it's on, you know, what it's going to look like, and the sooner we could have that community meeting, I think, the better that would be. There definitely is also, again, interest in less permeable, more permeable surfaces, essentially, sort of less concrete or using surface, even if it's a concrete surface that has greater permeability, or in some way plans for, you know, the water runoff. And that's it for me.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I just have one subject that I want to bring to the city's attention, and that has to do with the annual celebration that occurs every Good Friday, kind of a religious parade, for lack of a better word, I'm afraid the word parade is certainly not the right word, of members of the Catholic faith who, every Good Friday, gather at the Church of Our Lady of Sorrows up on New Hampshire Avenue and carry out a sort of a celebration or commemoration of Christ's 12 stages of the cross, it was celebrated, and they work their way up to St. Camilla's Church well up on New Hampshire Avenue. And this started since, oh, I guess, a dozen years ago. When it started, it was a very small group of people, maybe 50. And it's an interesting thing to observe. It's kind of exciting. It's fun. Certainly, the people involved in this thing are enthusiastic and about the whole thing. Well, what's been happening is that each year, the number of participants has grown and grown and grown. And they come down New Hampshire Avenue, and they turn right, left, I guess, up onto Glen Side, and then march or parade up Wildwood Drive, I guess up to Kirkland, and eventually they work their way back out onto one of the main streets. I'm not sure. What's happened, though, is that with all the enthusiasm and the increasing numbers of people, they're walking on lawns, through yards, and through gardens, and kind of damaging plants, tulips, pansies, whatever happens to be in the path. And why they do that, I think it's just sort of probably just out of sheer exuberance or something of that nature, certainly not intended to be malicious. And I noticed this week, Wednesday and Thursdays, the city's Department of Public Works gardening staff was working diligently, sprucing up and cultivating the plants, the flowers, and trees in the circle there at the corner of Wildwood and Glen Side. They were there for 24 hours, several of them. They just finished all this work just before this event started. And I was talking to one of the patrol officers and his crews are sitting next to the Bright Light Baptist Church, and he was a bit mystified as to what this was all about. He said, "Oh, this has been advertised on the radio, and there's expecting 1,000 people." So sure enough, there's a good bit of trampling occurred through all of that nice gardening work that occurred there. So I, you know, this is a great celebration. I don't want to do anything to discourage it in the slightest. I think it's great, it's fun to observe it, interesting as well. But I do think somehow or another, it needs to be monitored better, either by our police or perhaps it just needs to, they need to be encouraged to take their route, not up Wildwood Drive, which is not really designed for hundreds of, perhaps not, I don't know how many people there are, but many people who kind of are joyously spreading out, you know, even up to close to the doorways of people's houses when they have the opportunity. And maybe the whole thing needs to be channeled, just to be kept on New Hampshire Avenue. This, to me, I feel like this is a very delicate subject, and I don't want to offend the celebrants in any way, shape, or form. I think it's, as I said, an exciting activity, and I'm glad that they do it, because it's a meaningful experience. But I just think that we've, as residents of Wildwood Drive, we've watched it get bigger and bigger every year, and now it's sort of getting to the point where we have to put up a police tape that you can get at the hardware store to keep people from walking through our tulips and other things that we've planted. And I know I sound like a grouch about this whole thing, and I don't really mean to, but it just seems like there's just way too many people for what the street can accommodate. I'd just like this to be looked into next year. Yes?
Chief, you got a quick comment?
Quick. First time I've heard the complaint, generally, because it's such a big thing, we're generally dealing with the traffic opening up the streets and moving around.
Yeah.
And we have monitored, we meet with the group each year, and we will take everything down. Actually, I'll have an aftermath meeting. Usually, we only meet for them before, but I'll have an aftermath meeting this year and bring them your concerns.
Yeah. I certainly haven't raised the complaint, because I've just, in past years, we've just stood out front and sort of said, "Please, move over." But we weren't home this year, and we were just really concerned. And I just, it's just getting bigger and bigger every year. I mean, that's to their credit that it's growing, but it's just sort of getting too big, I think.
All right. Take care, and we'll get back to you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Ms. Matthews and city staff, especially the recreation department, for the dance that they organized for the young people, the middle school-age kids, at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center last Friday night. And I really laud the efforts of the recreation department to serve this age group in our community. I think it's one of the most important age groups for helping to reduce inappropriate activity and filling and offering activities that are positive for the young people. And I look forward to assisting the recreation department for the next dance to try to bring more young people to the event and make it a bigger and bigger event every time we hold it. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Well, what would a council comment session be without a discussion of cocktails? And that's what I'd like to spend a couple of seconds on here, let me. I wondered if, Mayor, you would have any further information about the state highway administration's possibility of SHA redoing 410 from New Hampshire to the junction in addition to their resourcing of New Hampshire from 410 to Eastern. Well, I'm very happy that they're going to resurface that section of New Hampshire, which is partly in my ward and partly in colleagues' ward, but I'm still concerned about New Hampshire Avenue or Ethan Allen Avenue. Have you heard anything about that?
I had a meeting with the district engineer, I guess, a week and a half ago. You don't want to hear what I learned.
Okay. Well, then, the next --
They basically said, if, they said, "It's yours."
As far as ownership?
Yes. And they want to do a swap. They give us Flower Avenue, and we give them Ethan Allen. And then we will each maintain that which we own after that swap. And even if they wanted to try and do anything with it today, they don't have any money available for, I believe, two years. And so there was nothing in that that was a good takeaway. And so we're going to need to continue to work on that issue, because they don't have any money, and we haven't had that in our, in any of the stuff that we've figured. Another piece that came out of that was also, which was totally news to me, and I think runs counter to what I've heard in the past, that their position is that the local governments maintain sidewalks along state highways. And so in terms of what we put in our study for what we needed to look at for improving sidewalks, we did not include sidewalks along state highways, because they were the responsibility of state highway. And their position is, "No, that's our responsibility." So that's an additional, if that, in fact, is what ends up being the case, that is additional money that we would have to somehow find now and in the future for maintenance of those sidewalks, and would increase by a good bit, the $41 million that was the bottom line on that whole study.
Are you saying that only when a state highway runs through a local jurisdiction does the local jurisdiction have responsibility?
Well, it would be either the county or the state.
But aren't --
This county or the city. Therefore, it would always be running through a local jurisdiction.
Right. So that means that the new sidewalks that are being put on New Hampshire Avenue right now were paid for by us?
No, we don't own that part of the street.
They say, they'll put them in.
If there's new construction, they will install the sidewalks, but the actual maintenance over kind of regular day-to-day maintenance, they say, should be the local jurisdictions.
But the sidewalks along New Hampshire --
Or if there's special funding project.
If there's special funding, or if they've been so deteriorated that they need wholesale replacement, that's supposed to come as part of a larger project from the state.
Well, thank you. I'm kind of counting out holes between Jackson and Carol, and there, it's a very large number right now, and I'm intense on finding out what I can do, perhaps colleagues would be willing to work with me on this as well, to approach state highway directly and in conjunction with our staff and with you, and have a continuing discussion about that.
That was part of the discussion.
My frustration level at this point is very high. I just want to log that.
And I went into that meeting frustrated and came out even more frustrated.
Thank you. Does it seem like a place?
How much did Jersey barriers cost?
I was going to talk about that right now.
Are you?
Yes.
Good, then you can do it.
So we'll move along to additional agenda items. There are none, and the agenda scheduling update to bring folks' attention to, next Monday, there is a public hearing on the city manager's proposed FY11 budget that we'll hear about later in this meeting, and that's also the constant yield tax rate public hearing. And we will have a budget work session next Monday. And then the following Monday, April 19th, is Ward Five Night. And did you want to say anything about that now?
Come out, everyone, from Ward Five. All four of you, no.
And starting with that week, with April 22nd, that's a Thursday, the council will be having budget work sessions on Thursday nights, as well as our regular meetings on Monday nights. Monday, the 26th, we are having a Safe Roadways Committee report. Again, Thursday, the 29th, is a budget work session. Monday, the May 3rd, is a budget work session, and supposedly, final budget reconciliation. So everybody should take note of that. And also, that evening, May 3rd, we have a tentative work session discussion scheduled for proposed policies and procedures for use of the auditorium. And then I'll just go into May a little bit more to say that May 17th, yes, right there, is the Ward Four Night scheduled for that evening. So we're scheduling those Ward Nights on the 3rd Monday of the month, and I'll just go forward into June to say that the last one of the first cycle through, Monday, June 21st, is the tentative schedule for the Ward One Night. So if there's anything, any reason to change that, we ought to know now, and if there isn't, we'll go ahead and publicize all of those Ward Nights so that people know about those. And the next item is adoption of minutes. We have minutes from January 19th and 25th.
I'll move it now.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Sniffer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. I don't hear any nays. Those are adopted.
I would also like to take this opportunity to compliment the city clerk, Jessie Carpenter, for her work on the minutes. I know it's probably a thankless job, but yet I would like to thank you for your work on that.
Here, here.
Next agenda item is public comment period. For anybody who'd like to speak on anything that is not on our special session agenda this evening, so anything that's on the work session or anything that's not on the agenda, and if you'd please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay. I'm Mr. Castle Opelous, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Ward Four, your favorite street that we, want to tell everybody out there that, you know, we're getting to the point now where we've got to start thinking about registering to vote. You know, we've got to try and get as many of our friends, constituents, family, whoever out there to register. Talk to the high schools about it when they're turning 18, that that's a good way to have a right into adulthood, right of passage into adulthood, rather than drinking and driving, let's have a voter drive instead. And once you register to vote in November and on the primaries, I expect to see people out there voting, you know, at least once in my life. I'd like to see the whole city out there voting, you know, at least once in my life. I don't know how much time I got left, but I expect to see at least Tacoma Park out there doing close to 100 percent voting. Also, I've been thinking, you know, a lot of the kids, and now the parents, you know, that come home from school, and they don't, they go out to places on their own and stuff and leave the kids at home, why can't they drop the kids off at city council so that the kids can learn something about their city -- about their city government, learn something about their, you know, about what goes on and how to further their education? That'd be a really good educational thing for the kids to do. Plus, it'd be a safe thing to do. It'd be better than having them on the street corner out there learning about drugs. They don't need to learn about drugs that way. We could, we could easily, you know, give them the education they need right here at city council, you know, on how our government works. You know, and they could be, they could be like me when they get older, you know, more, more effective peacemakers rather than, rather than, you know, just running around the streets raising hell, you know, finding out that that ain't the way to go. You know, let's, let's bring them in, in here and let them learn about our government. You know, I think that'd be the way to do it. Then they can become useful citizens even as they are growing up. You know, the Young Activist Club does that. They become useful citizens, and I'd like to see more and more of that. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see more and more people joining the Young Activist Club, you know, because it was a great idea about getting the Styrofoam out of the schools, you know, because that's a dangerous chemical right there. And it's great to see the kids involved in that. And it'd be nice, you know, to see the kids involved in how they can help our environment, our city government, and our families and friends alike, you know, because they could become very useful as they are growing up. Never mind, it'd be more than just homework for them. They could come down here and the mothers could pick them up later on when they come back. It'd give the parents, you know, some time for themselves. It'd give the kids a learning experience, and I'd love to see that. I would really love to see that. If anyone out there is listening, please teach your kids young about the importance of our government, teach them young about the importance of voting. You know, maybe they could have games about voting. And since this is Tacoma Park, I think we can do it. Thank you very much for letting me share. Keep the peace. We can do it. It's a way, it's one more way to the road of peace and nonviolence. Let us continue it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Kellerman, 18 Philadelphia Avenue. I want to bring to your attention something that actually would possibly enter into the after-snow report and maybe even the emergency preparedness, but it hasn't been highlighted. And I want to make sure that you understand very clearly that this has nothing to do with 30 inches of snow. This has to do with six inches and eight inches of snow. It just gets exacerbated by 30 inches, and that is people who don't clear their sidewalks. It so happens that my wife has MS. She has trouble walking. She has trouble with balance. She cannot navigate sidewalks that have not been cleared. Strollers can't navigate sidewalks that haven't been cleared. I would like you to think about the consequences of people being pushed or making the decision to walk in the middle of the street after a snow and some four-wheel-drive cowboy coming down that street and hitting them. Just think how bad an affair that would turn out to be. So, I think not clearing sidewalks is dangerous. It's dangerous for the walkers. It's dangerous for the people who walk in the middle of the street, and it could have very serious consequences. I'm not sure what steps need to be taken, but I think there are steps that can be taken and should be taken. There are, you know, there are corners that are, time after time, snow after snow, remain There are store sidewalks, the same ones, time after time, that remain uncleared. A particularly interesting uncleared piece of sidewalk, which finally, which actually got cleared by the, by the, was in front of the fire department parking lot. The fire department cleared the apron for the trucks but did not clear the sidewalk. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't know if I should follow Andy or not here. Me, oh, Kaye Daniels Cullen, President, SS Carroll Neighborhood Association, 19 Sherman Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Mayor Williams, city council members, city manager and city clerk. I'm here again tonight to sing the praises of the Public Works Department during our three winter snow, snow events. I'm underlining everything twice that I sent to you all in the memo dated March 22nd, which you should have in your packets this evening, the corrected memo, by the way. I know that the Emergency Preparedness Committee is to make their official report tonight with some specifics for our preparedness and handling of the snow situations. So, I wanted to comment first as a proud citizen of this fair city. I think one only has to speak with anyone outside the city limits of Tacoma Park to understand how well we were cared for during all three storms. Our streets were almost immediately passable, and what was most remarkable were the very high snow piles on the corners, I'm directly against, opposite of what Andy said, but the, the high snow piles on the corners were there one day, and as soon as anybody could break loose, they were gone. I was shocked at how quickly they were removed. I was very pleasantly surprised because they were pretty darn high on some of the major streets. We have the Carroll, of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association, have ordered a plaque for Dale Braithwaite and the Public Works Associates. Unfortunately, it wasn't completed in time for this evening's discussion but will be presented upon completion. I thank you for your time and for giving me the opportunity to speak and for doing what you do. And because I haven't gone yellow yet, I also want to commend the Recreation Department as a citizen for their excellent, excellent dance, well-organized, well-professionally done. The police, the police were there. It was just, it was just a really remarkable and fun event, and I'm looking forward to, as a member of that committee, dancing again. More dances. Me for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana, Diana Cohen, 16 Jefferson Avenue. I'm here as president of Historic Tacoma to once again invite the council and the residents of Tacoma Park to our Historic Tacoma's annual house and garden tour. This has been a tradition of Tacoma Park for more than three decades, and this year we are highlighting an as-yet undiscovered neighborhood in Tacoma Park, the one directly behind us, Hodges Heights. J. Rogers Roger Hodges had a dairy farm on the land directly behind us. In fact, his dairy farm provided the land for this building, the library, Tacoma Elementary School, Piney Branch Elementary School, and Tacoma Middle School. And after he did all of that and after he stopped dairy farming in the late '30s, he sold off the land, became a policeman in the police department, and regular, ordinary folks arrived to build their houses on the lots behind us. And though, 10 of those houses will be on display on May 2nd, Sunday, May 2nd, from 1:00 to 5:00. It's our usual four-hour spread. And we are featuring, there's some bungalows and some colonial revivals. There's one house that was actually a Hodges family house. And the tickets are $20. They are $20 in advance. If you want a deal, you can buy them before the actual day of the tour for $15. They are available at Now and Then, Marx, The Co-op, and Culture Shop. Members of Historic Tacoma also get some discounted tickets. If you want more information about how to buy tickets, you can go online to our website, historicatacoma.org. And when it's the day of the tour, May 2nd, we are going to be selling tickets on the lawn of City Hall, the library, right on the corner. And that's also where you can pick up your brochures. All of the profits from the tour go toward renovating our building. So, we encourage all the citizens and especially council members to come visit Hodges Heights, and we'll see you on Sunday, May 2nd.
Diana, Diana, could you just real quickly give us a 30-second summary of the renovation project, how it's going?
Yes. We, first of all, we own the building free and clear. So, the money that we raise now is going directly into renovating the building. There is, the one thing that we are missing at this point is the renovated bathroom, which is necessary to get the resident, the occupancy permit. Everything about the structure of the building is finished. It survived the storms, all the, all the snow with some minor leaks which we're dealing with. The next challenge after we actually get the shell finished and the bathroom finished is shelves for the archives, some furniture, all those nice things that, that make it more than just the shell of a building.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I am Mrs. Gordon from Lochne Avenue. I'm here because I filed a call to complaint, and I believe that I am not getting the full cooperation of the housing. I had discussed with the manager that I would be bringing back documents on Friday. I was told I had to bring them back by the 3:00 hour. When I came to the Housing Department, the documents were already mailed off to me. It's important that I submit documents that would help me in my complaint because it's only the fair thing. I'm asking that someone looking to this situation and assist me in submitting documents that would support my concerns. I have previously experienced mishandling of complaints, and an apology after the fact does not help me in any way. Any help I can get from the council or the housing in bringing forth my complaints, I have documents that I need to be handled carefully. I would like your help in this matter. It's just important that we are allowed to exercise our rights and that our complaints are not just slid under the, the table. I, I need your help. I, I am the widowed mother of a daughter, and we are fighting for our rights to live in our apartment. Please do not ignore me and do not ignore my complaints. I, I've had, as recently as October, letter, a certified letter that was already mailed to me when I was checking on it, I was told it was not here. So, obviously, there are mistakes being made that need to be corrected. Please understand my concerns, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. We hear your concerns, and we'll make sure that the staff responds appropriately and that you get the help that you need. Anybody else? Okay. City manager, have any comments? Then we'll move to the public hearing. This is the public hearing on the general obligation bond issuance in an amount not to exceed $1.4 million to finance the state retirement and pension system of Maryland deficit. Did the city manager want to give any brief background on this before we take test among? And if anybody has signed up in the back, somebody could bring that sheet up to us. And then, anybody who hasn't signed up, you'll have the opportunity to speak after those who've signed up.
The city's non-sworn personnel are covered by the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System, and we have a deficit unfunded liability going back to the mid-'90s that was amortized over 40 years. The rate that is assessed by the state retirement system has varied over that period of time, but essentially it's the actuarial rate of return that the retirement system otherwise believes it would earn. That current rate is 7.5% a year. The original payment by the city in the mid-1990s increased for a period of five years by 15% each year and then went to 5% per year. So, for this fiscal year, we made a payment of approximately $79,000. Because the city's payment is not quite matching the interest rate that is being assessed by the state, what has essentially happened over time is that our deficit has continued to grow in spite of the annual payments that we are making. So, staff had approached the council back in November of last year suggesting that due to the low interest rates available in the marketplace, that we issue a request for proposals and that we secure general obligation bond financing to pay the state off as that would be more financially advantageous to the city. So, a request for proposal was issued, and those proposals were shared with the council. And on March 22nd, the council awarded a bid to SunTrust Bank for a general obligation bond up to $1.4 million for a 10-year term at an interest rate of 3.59%. The public hearing this evening and the ordinance that is before the council, that is the next agenda item, are required to actually move forward with the actual issuance and sale of the bonds. So, tonight is the opportunity for the community to comment on that general obligation bond issue. The second reading is scheduled two weeks from tonight. There is a requirement in the city charter that final action cannot be taken on any ordinance until 14 days after the public hearing is held. So, if the council does approve the issuance and sale of the general obligation bond, we anticipate going to closing on April 23rd. I did want to call to the council's attention, the anticipated payoff as of that date is $1.54 million. We issued the request for proposals before we actually got the most recent actuarial valuation from the state. So, the full payoff would require a withdrawal from the city's reserve funds to supplement the bond financing from SunTrust. We will be, if this is approved, we will be submitting a budget amendment to the council in the near future. We need to recognize the receipt of any bond proceeds as well as the payoff to the state.
Are there any signups? Would anybody like to comment on this public hearing on this bond issuance? Going once, going twice? Okay, no public comment. Public hearing is closed. We now move to the special session. Yes?
Can I ask a very clarifying question?
Yes.
Okay. On the proposed city ordinance at the back?
The second whereas, at the end of the line, it reads, "The city has a deficit of approximately 1.4 arising from less asset value." I think there's a, there's some extra word or two in there.
Are you referring to the 1.4 or the clause that follows?
No, the, "arising from less asset value than accrued..."
It is a very convoluted language, but that is actually the description that the state retirement system suggested we use to accurately describe the purpose for the general obligation bonds.
"Arising from less asset value than accrued..."
It's a mouthful, I would agree, Councilmember Snipper. It's a mouthful, I would agree, council member.
I would have, you know, switched it with more words around it, because I eventually figured out what you were trying to say there, but didn't quite get it. Okay.
We can see if on second reading, there's a way to clarify.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to the special session item, and this is the first reading ordinance. Would somebody like to move that, put it on the table?
Move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Snipper, cast second by Councilmember Clay. I have one or two questions on this. Is my understanding correct that the only place that there will essentially be kind of a two transactional payments in one fiscal year would be this fiscal year, because we've already paid the 78,594, and then we would be paying the difference between, the difference that was just referred to in the convoluted language of the, what has to be paid off and what the bond proceeds would be, so that we would kind of be paying an extra payment in this fiscal year?
Correct. What you, when we get to the, next year's budget, you'll actually see in the schedules a rather large payment in the non-departmental budgetary unit that is projected for FY '10. And you are correct, Mayor, that would be the payment that was already made this year, as well as the payoff to the state that is anticipated to occur later this month. Going forward, there would be no amount included in the non-departmental budgetary unit as the deficit would be paid off, but you would see the debt service payment in the debt service division of the budget.
Okay. And just to reiterate, the, the main reason that the council is doing this is that we were falling farther behind, rather than gaining on paying off this obligation. And this is a way to kind of stop that negative flow, and in the process, pay a lot less in the long run. The, the payment terms are for a larger amount over a shorter period of time, but it's a, it's a defined amount that isn't going to change like this current one keeps doing. And in the, it's a bigger payment per year for 10 years, but we don't have 25 years' worth of paying it off and then finding we still owe more than we started with.
That is correct. Under this scenario, the bonds would be paid off in 2021, whereas, under the current arrangement, we are scheduled to have paid off the state in 2035. But given that the deficit is continuing to grow, that's obviously not going to happen.
Okay. Other comments on council, questions?
So what's the interest rate that the bonds are?
3.59%.
And we're paying 7.5%?
That's the current amount, yes.
So to me, it's a simple arbitrage opportunity where we save 4% interest a year. I know it's a longer timeframe, but it doesn't seem like the opportunity cost of that timeframe is worth 4% a year, so it's a very simple way for us to save money.
Other comments, questions? Okay. I don't think there will be any, but I guess we'll take public comment on this at first reading. Nobody was here to comment at the public hearing. Anybody showed up in the meantime who wants to comment at first reading? Seeing none, this is first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And we will have the second reading in two weeks. We will now move to our work session, and the first item on that is the report from the Emergency Preparedness Committee. And the chairs, Wolfgang Mergner and Chief Ricucci, are here. And also, there are some other folks who are members of the committee. And I'll remind everybody that we've scheduled 20 minutes for this discussion, and the discussion afterward is on the snow follow-up report. I have a feeling that there might be a little bit of bleed over, or potential bleed over in the reports, but I know that Chairman Mergner will rule with an iron fist on bleed over.
Ouch. Okay. First, the report. I was told by city clerk that I should keep brief, so you have enough chance to ask questions. Let me do that. So from the report, I was told the mayor has requested that all the council members read the report before you come to the meeting, so you're fed it.
And if I can just point out, an emergency in the waiting, the chief has his feet tangled in the cord of your microphone, and it could go to the floor. Thank you.
Must have stopped me.
Way to stop.
The first thing I would, I'd like to call your attention to is that we have an outstanding committee. And I like to, I like to stress this, because you really find the qualified people together. They have backgrounds in emergency preparedness and emergency response, and they have a genuine interest in it, and making lists together, obviously, more impressed myself what qualified people we have. Secondly, we have a good working relationship with the city staff, with my coach here, Chief Ricucci, and with Captain Kersey. And I think it's a unique situation, particularly unique since we do have cooperation as well from the county, to Robert Jones, who is the manager of the emergency response in the county. And this gives us a lot of interaction and insight in emergency preparedness. Furthermore, we do have the hospital in, with Bill Hentosh, and we do have the fire department with Tom Horn. And they're all very valuable people, because they keep us straight, and they make the connection, the interaction which we need. Secondly, you have made a very elaborate assignment to us, what we should do. And I like to organize my presentation along the assignments. The first point is, we should review the emergency operation manual. And this was a major work during the last year, year and a half, until we got help. And we got help through a grant from the Homeland Security to complete this work. And there's two items to it, namely, the status of the, of the continuity of operation manual, which is called COOP. And then there's a second one, which is the emergency operation manual, which is called EOPM. Now, COOP, COOP is in part confidential. So after we submitted our work on it, we will not see the final product, because there's many sensitive information about the city in there, and this is not a public document in general. But this was completed through a grant, the Urban Area Security Initiative, and the University of Maryland was the active agent which did complete the work. We have the first draft in our hands, and there will be more work on it as we adjust to our own situation. The next one is the emergency operations manual. And we have done a lot of work on it, and in preparing for this, we had to rethink many things new. There, there's two parts to it. One part is the main, the main manual. The second part are the annexes. And the annexes were the parts which cost us a lot of work, namely, the volunteers had to define how they come in, and so on, and so on. And arrangements had to be made. The city has cooperated with us. For example, as I will mention later, we made a memorandum of understanding with the volunteer office of Montgomery County, which allows us to have our people trained over there with them, and which allows us to have their services here in the city should an emergency occur which affects us, where they activate volunteers to be here. And there have certain requirements for doing this, and we had to look through this, and we had to find space. And so we went through all this until the final memorandum of understanding was signed, which now helps this relationship. The emergency operation manual, again, is incomplete. And we have the first draft in our hands. The agents which we're doing was Duberry and Davis. And there is one particular aspect to it, where you need to be active. And this means we, we have questions there, and I will pass this out. Where either they have initiation, or the council is to make decisions, on emergency response. If you kindly pass it along.
And is that something that we should?
Not now.
Consider in the future and decide how best to address that?
Future meetings.
Okay.
This is after our first review, we identified there's something that needs to be decided, who, and so on. If you read the details, you see that decisions are necessary. There will be considerations, and I think what is important, the council should be informed how emergency response takes place. And therefore, once these manuals are adopted and accepted, I think we need a working session with the council, which might at least take two hours, to go through the manuals, to know every little detail of how operations take, take place, and what the city has said, what we are going to do in emergencies. Same way as every city employee has to know what's in the emergency manual. Furthermore, I would recommend strongly that every city, every city council member takes the FEMA test 100 and 700 to be familiar with what is an emergency response is, how it's mounted, who is the incident commander, what are the rights and obligations of these people, and so on. I think it would be very helpful if you would undertake this task, to do the test. Every member of the emergency preparedness committee has to take this, has to make a test, and has to give the results of the test to the chief, which certification that he's passed the test. The next item on the, on the list of assignments from you is to explore formation of volunteer neighborhood emergency teams. And I just described how we started the framework of the organization, namely, the work with the volunteer center in Montgomery County. And I like to add to this that I'm a member of the volunteer corps of the county, so I go to meetings over there to be integrated with this. Now, the county trains volunteers in different categories. So there are one category, SERT, Community Emergency Response Team. This is a very intense training. It takes weeks to do that. It takes a lot of physical labor. I think Councilmember Simmons has done it. And the current situation of the SERT program is that they are reactivating the program and getting, re-enlisting former members in this program. So every former member who has done the training has to reactivate the status, and then there will be... The other groups are the Medical Reserve Corps, which helps the health department in, mainly in emergencies, or the Emergency Action Team, which helps mainly neighborhoods. And then in addition, there's American Red Cross, and there is the radio communication people who help the city. And we have training opportunities for all of them available. Now, the next item is that we have to reach out to the community, and we have done that. And the survey, with the city, we asked the city to incorporate in their survey a question about knowledge about emergency preparedness, and it was very pleasing to read that 66% of the population said, yes, they know about it, and of these, a number have said, yes, we have done something about it. And the rest, of course, has said, no, we haven't done, have done little bit, but that's normal. We have presented at fairs, and you have, all you have seen us being standing there and trying to advertise for emergency preparedness. We've written articles on emergency preparedness. We have produced cable for the snapshot of cable TV, and we are currently in the process of producing a public service announcements for emergency preparedness. One will be on animals in emergencies, the other one will be on seniors in emergencies. This is in the planning stage. We have contacted the Department of Housing and Open Development. We discussed with them, how can we get cooperation from the huge apartments which we have in Tacoma Park, to get them involved in emergency preparedness? Because one of my concerns is that we have these huge apartments, and they're not ready for any emergency. So what we have done is, since they have to be recertified every year, we made packages of emergency information and gave it to these housing, people who come to these meetings, and it's been distributed by the city. Furthermore, we had a response of one group who asked that we provide for the entire building, 500, I forgot, large number of flyers for information to the, give out to their tenants. We do make community presentations, and we have planned to do one on a small emergency. Unfortunately, the attendance was very low, so snow was not important at that time anymore. But we got some good discussion. We got some thought-provoking ideas on this, in this discussion, so it was worth our being there. Grand opportunities, we have not followed up yet. A grand opportunities, however, will become important in the future. We have been so far, been supported by the county. They give us all the material we distributed. This might not continue, and we might have to look for our own materials. So we might have to look for funding sources, we might have to look for ways or means of keeping active in this respect. Reporting to the council, we have done it, and we try to do it every six months, a little bit stretched, but we did it. We did a major outreach in November to recruit volunteers in the city of Tacoma Park. And the reason to do this is to get residents in our community who are trained in different categories of emergency preparedness. We got a response, we have signed up 12 people at this occasion, and we plan to repeat this again during this coming, current year, to recruit more people. And the response was very positive. We have to follow up. In order to make the follow-up solid, we created a subcommittee on, on volunteers, to keep them together, to not to lose them. That's the biggest problem for many, many organizations, equal for the city of Tacoma Park, that volunteers come and go. And you have to resplenish them, you have to reach out to them, you have to do everything you can to keep them. We did, okay, advise them to the city, we cannot do until our manual is finished, but we will do, this is in the plans. When the city does emergency testing, we will be there as requested, and will be helping with executing of these plans. We have, for the first time, and I think this is unique in all the committees in Tacoma Park, have facilitated meeting, a planning meeting for the future. And the outcome of this planning meeting were as follows. We created a strategic planning subcommittee to make some permanence for this committee to see what, what should we do, to strategize for 10 years from now for emergency preparedness. We made a subcommittee for the review of the emergency manual. We made a subcommittee for communication. People who write the newsletter articles will do the snapshot or the public service announcement. And we have a subcommittee for volunteers. One thing which is not entirely through, because I'm waiting for the county to help us with that, is neighborhood ready. This means the effort that the neighborhood, neighbors help neighbors, and, and neighbors are lending their services to people, such as the mayor did in, in snow emergencies, driving people to situations, and so on, whatever needs, neighborhood needs. And it's our goal. Now, I do have concerns, which I have not addressed here, and one of the concerns is the apartments. If you ever go into the apartments, most people who are here do not, do not live in apartments, but if you go there, you're impressed by the amount of building there is, and people housed there. And what a problem it is if that emergency should happen. And what a problem it is if that emergency should happen. I have concern, and I will discuss it further with the city, about vulnerable population, old people, and people with disabilities. And I like to have this outside emergency preparedness committee. But we like to think about that, because that's something which will hamper us and cause maybe a tremendous drain in emergencies of our resources. Okay, thank you for listening to me.
Chief.
I concur. And I just think you need to know that I've worked with a lot of committees over the years, and I've worked with a lot down in Tacoma Park. This is one of the best chairmans I've ever worked with, and it's not just a part-time job, it's a full-time job with him. And he has taken, for me and Ed, it's just to try to keep up with him, the entire staff, but he cares about the city, and his dedication and commitment to emergency preparedness goes beyond anything that I've seen in a long time, and it's been a pleasure to work with him. He makes it very easy for the co-chair, trust me. But I think what we presented here is true, and we've come a long ways in the three years since I've been here, and since he took over as co-chair, and I think we need your support, obviously, to continue what we're doing now.
Council, have any questions, comments? Councilmember Wright.
Could we, the council, see a version of the, is it COOP or COOP? The COOP plan? Could we either have a private presentation of that in a closed session if we wanted to, or be given a confidential document, as we sometimes are on occasion when it's appropriate?
We presented it, I think, three years ago, so it's...
And then my second question is, I know there's been challenges in recruiting neighbor, you know, neighbors to participate in an active way in their kind of neighborhood readiness, and I know you've tried very hard in the Penn neighborhood, and I've helped you in some of those efforts. What do you think's underlying that? Is it sort of, you know, it's not on people's immediate mind because there's not a urgency? What do you think's driving that?
I think it's...
And can the council do anything to be helpful?
There are elements of it. I think there's no response, I've shown one thing, if needed, neighbors do help neighbors.
Yeah.
I think part of the sheltering at home has very successfully worked, and this was expressed by one of the chairman or presidents of a neighborhood association, that it worked. However, yes, preparedness, I think our effort was not very well done, and we learned from mistakes. That's why I'm so slow starting it again. There was one thing, people had to exchange telephone numbers, they didn't want to do that, or telephone trees. So we learned from all these mistakes, that people are sensitive about things we didn't expect to be sensitive about. And so I think there's two sides to it. People are doing it if necessary, and to train them to do it right takes time.
If I may, I'm the chairperson of the volunteer committee, and I have a lot of people helping me. And to answer your question, I think, as we all know, I don't particularly like computers very much. I have, probably got my email at work. But with what's been said about telephone trees and going hard copy, that's how I'm going to work with people, telephone trees, hard copy, copy, and certainly electronics, no question about that. I will enter into the 20th century, instead of 24th, but I will come in the 20th century. I think that it is a networking process, it's a get-to-know-each-other process. A few years ago, with our neighborhood volunteers on the Public Safety Committee, we had meetings, we had picnics. I'm not sure what's going to happen now, this is going to be a very fluid situation. As a matter of fact, I consider everyone on the council an advisor in this situation, because I'll be, I'll need your help too, and your ideas, who and how to approach in your different wards. And as far as I'm concerned, the more people we have, the better. And there'll be different levels of training, there'll be different levels of what people can do, but at least we'll get to know that, and we'll get to know each other, and we will network and work together, basically. And somebody says, can you make emergency preparedness? Can it, we were talking about it in a meeting, can you make it sort of fun? As crazy as it sounds, yeah, I think in a way you can make it a little fun, not something we would do. So we'll see what happens over the next year. I hope to have contact with people, certainly get them a little better trained by the fall. I don't know how many people, I can't make promises now, because I'm very busy in my business, but for the winter season, frankly. And then as we move on towards the winter, for the winter, and as we go on, get more people, I think the better we'll know each other, be trained, and can help take care of each other. But it is what I call a hard copy network. And I used to have telephone trees years ago in the city, and I kind of plan to do that again. Because if we do lose electricity, we can certainly use our cellphones in our cars, but we need a landline telephone. The computers, I know everybody's got batteries, your computers will work for a while, and I'm going wireless on my, when I get my laptop, sure, that'll work. But I think having a hard copy way of doing it too is also through a landline phone, just for instance. So I don't know if that answers your question, but reaching out and going back and forth, communicating. Do you think it works?
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for coming here tonight. I really appreciate the amount of work that you've put in over the last few years, and not just the work put in, but the accomplishments that you've realized in the last two or three years. I, as I look at your report, and having talked to Mr. Murgener shortly after the recent snow events, it strikes me that a great deal has been made in planning for good continuation of the government through disasters. And I think that's, to me, it appears to be the most notable accomplishments that you have to date. I think the recent snowstorms highlight, as you said during your presentation, some opportunities for improved preparedness. And I think getting the residents of the city more engaged in this process is important, because we don't want to just make sure that our government is still functioning, but we want to make sure that our neighborhoods are still functioning, and the government can't do that for us. It's the residents of those neighborhoods themselves who have to do it. I, I think what seems to me to be lacking is a sense of urgency of, among the community about getting this, getting this accomplished, that, you know, the snowstorm came unexpectedly, hurricanes come unexpectedly, and the types of, you know, disasters come unexpectedly. We need to be better prepared than we were, because this snowstorm may not be the worst type of incident that we have to address. So I would like to see an expanded focus. I know you still have some work to do on the government preparations, but I would like to see a expanded focus on the actual neighborhood preparations, and the people helping people. And I have to tell you where I'm coming from, is, you know, I went through the CERT training several years ago. The county's now trying again to get the CERT training going and getting the CERT program together. There's, there just hasn't been a good focus and good accomplishments in the area of actual community and neighborhood preparations. Not the same type of, not the same level of accomplishments that you've described tonight for the government preparations, for taking care of the government.
What Josh asked, and you alluding to, I think what's happening is that the people are, can't, you can't engage them continuously enough, because there aren't enough things for them to do. And that is an organizational issue, and it goes up and down the line. You alluded to CERT. There are a number of, let me go, I don't know how much time we have. Let me go ahead and tell you how the...
Time's the limit, don't worry.
Don't listen to him.
How the fire department handles something like that. You know, a car falls into a river, they bring out helicopters, they bring out their motorboats, they bring out their, well, not because they need them to pull the car out of the river, but because it gives them an opportunity to train, to use the equipment, to get the people familiar with the situation, blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. We have incidents in the city, emergencies, that could fall under the situation of the neighborhood coming together and helping. The neighborhood is not called out, these people are not called out to be there to help or to do something. We've had emergencies where the hazmat people from the fire department showed up because people working on Carroll Avenue plowed into a gas line, which is a major emergency situation. It would have been an excellent training exercise for a neighborhood, neighborhood team to be involved. CERT, the county, didn't call out, didn't make anything of it, didn't use the opportunity. So it's, it's one of those things.
Andy, I think you are giving a good example of my concern, and that is that we're not doing it, we're not doing it yet, and the community, the community members themselves need to be more aware of what's going on, need to be more aware of their need for, do they need to be involved?
They need to be aware.
Right. And, and that, I think, is, appears to be one of the tasks that your committee has to take on before you can accomplish the more important part, which is actually getting the neighborhoods better prepared.
I might add, not by no means that this committee hasn't tried to reach out to our communities, it's, it's been a very tough hole. I mean, usually their, their stands at these fairs and festivals right next to ours, and of course, we draw a lot of kids because of the face painting and everything else. People just, it's one of those things, till it happens, then they may be interested, but it's very hard to engage them when things are going good, the weather's nice, you're talking about disasters, people don't want to hear that, people want to think...
If it was easy, we wouldn't need a committee.
Right. But it's not for trying, how much they have tried to outreach the public, and it's been probably the most frustrating thing of the committee, not, we've got a great committee, but getting other people in the community involved. And I think you were here the night we, we had reached out, and we had about, what, 12 people here?
We haven't succeeded yet, maybe we need to try different approaches, maybe reaching out to some of the community members that are marketing people, that can give ideas on how to reach out to the community in a better way. I don't know what the answer is, but I think you've done a great job in preparing for government continuity. I think, you know, the neighborhood preparedness is lacking, and I think I have a feeling of a need for urgency that I don't think is shared among the community.
To answer your question, I do have some ideas how to reach out, and in '04, '05, and '06, I did go out and speak with a number of the citizens associations about preparedness that worked well. And then Carol Bannerman and I, every other month, had the emergency preparedness article in the Tacoma Newsletter. It was instrumental in helping, they did a number of articles, and Tacoma Voice had to correct my grammar, but that's the way it goes, they did this very fine. But that helped. But what you're saying is true, and I also feel the urgency. As you know, I'm a, was a lifeguard, and still am a lifeguard in a way, and that's, that's my philosophy, prevent the crisis before, you're going to have a situation, prepare for it, be ready, hope it doesn't happen.
Let me, let me just leave it, because I know time's going on here. I just want to say that, you know, that's where I think there needs to be a stronger focus, but I also want to acknowledge the fact that there's a lot, a lot of progress been made since three years ago, too, in the neighborhood preparedness. And I appreciate the amount of effort you've put into it, and I recognize it's a difficult task, but I thank you.
Councilmember Clay, and then Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. When was the last time we activated the COOP plan? When was the last time we activated the COOP plan?
We haven't.
Have we ever done an exercise of the COOP plan?
Yes, we've done a tabletop.
Done a tabletop exercise? One of the things I thought was interesting in the snowstorm was neighbors who were self-organizing. And as I was watching this happening on the list serve, I was thinking that we should take advantage of this energy and sign these people up to be our full-time organized neighbors. We had a pretty active organizational effort in Forest Park to provide alternative housing for people who had lost power along Elm Avenue. And we had a less formal network of people in Long Branch, Sligo, although I, because I had email access, we did field offers of assistance, and then were able to put those back out for people, mostly relative to the, to the housing. But, you know, it occurs to me, though, that if we lost all power, and for those people who had the power, what we needed was a door-to-door system. And so I connected with neighbors who, in fact, I didn't go door-to-door, but neighbors went door-to-door and checked on people. And the police went and checked on one particular gentleman three times that the neighbors were worried about. I mean, so there was, there was good and effective communication system, but it seems like we might be able to capitalize on some of that, those self-organizing systems. But the other thing I think might be interesting to do is actually run an exercise in the neighborhood. And then sign people up to participate, talk to them about whether or not they have three days of food and water, and it would be a neighbor-to-neighbor connection. One of the best city neighborhood activities I went to was, it was right after I was elected to the council, or just while I was running for office, the police department came out and had a little fair at, at Forest Park, and talked to everybody about public safety issues. And everyone came out to the park from the Forest Park neighborhood throughout the, throughout the day, and the woman who's the...
It was after you were elected, but two years ago.
No, this is, I think it was before you.
We did, we've done another one there since.
You did, because, yes, because we talked about it. But, but this very first time, the woman Pam, who works for the fire department, I think, worked for the city at that time, is that right?
Pam Taylor.
Yeah, she was there and talking about all the phone-in stuff and activities, and it was, it was, it was really great. It was, it was one of the most successful events that I've actually seen the city do, and they had things for the kids and everything. Anyway, traveling show, bring it to the neighborhood. It's also a time to get people to sign up to do the CERT training, and I think also more, a CERT training program is actually based in the city, I think would get more people involved.
To talk about CERT training, we've had two CERT trainings in the city. As Dr. Murgener said, that is very intense training. I would love to have 20 CERTs in the city, or as many, or more, but there is other training that we're going to look at, that the Volunteer Center does, which, call it CERT Lite, if you want to call it that.
You know, they have a teen CERT program, too. They'll do teen CERT. They have a teen CERT program, they have teen CERT, that'd be fun to do with the kids at the community center.
CERT is just getting started again. And I do plan to, we do plan to attempt, I will, I'm a CERT, and I do plan to, I'll go through the training again, kind of get to that maze again. And definitely coordinate with CERT and with the Volunteer Center. Again, networking, looking at resources, whatever those resources are, and your idea's next to my idea, and what I'm going to do is get you all my Gmail address. Anything you think that works in a networking situation, you know, let me know, and I'll share it with Wolfgang. Because any way we can network, any way, again, we can work together and get people interested, and keep them interested. get people interested, and keep them interested, and your idea, Carrie's idea of having a practice session is extremely important, whatever that practice session may be, tabletop, whatever, I think that's very important.
Councilmember Schultz?
In my days, sitting on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee with Buddy and Andy, and also somewhat with Wolfgang, and of course, the chief, this is a topic that was discussed even then, and so it's been something that I've thought about a lot over the last few years. The thing that I always come to is that each emergency tends to be a little bit unique, and it's a little bit like all the generals getting ready for the last war. You know, back in the 1950s, we used to have air raid shelters, because we were worried about the Russians coming over, and we had sirens, and those went off at a certain time every day, and there were practices. Back in World War II, people exercised blackouts of their windows, so that the, so that the enemy couldn't fi, figure out where our cities were. In 9/11, we were all advised to shelter in place, to go downstairs, to get lots of duct tape and plastic, and stock up with three week, three days' worth of food, and a lot of people did, I know in Washington, because we were just scared to pieces. Now, this most recent situation, sheltering in place with 30 inches of snow on the ground when you had no power and hadn't had heat for 72 hours, wasn't the solution. The solution was to get out of your house and find someplace to go where there was I can go on. If you have a health emergency or something like that, maybe the need is going to be evacuation. I don't know, we can all think of these things until we're, get to the point of being silly. The one thing that I've thought about over the years is, the only thing that's really common to all of these situations is a very reliable communication system. During the snowstorm, when I was trying to figure out what I could do to help my, my neighbors, I thought, well, let me turn on the Tacoma cable and see if there's any information there that people could find useful, and what I saw on Tacoma cable was a, the Fourth of July parade in the middle of the snowstorm, and the irony kind of made me angry, because I thought, well, here's a vehicle for getting out information, as long as people have power to their houses, to give them advice on what to do, or where to go, or things like that, and we weren't ready to use it. I agree with you, Buddy, is that relying on technology in these kinds of situations, when you may not be able to have it, depending on the nature of the disaster, is a little scary, and the idea, and this is nothing new, that you guys have not already talked about, I'm just affirming it, is the idea of community people who are, who are, know that they have a role to play, and can act as, let's call them block captains, because I don't want to try to invent some new term, where, where if nothing else, if everything, the power is out, and there's no other way to communicate, then you do it the old-fashioned way. It's called old technology. It's great if the cellphones are working, or the landlines, if we have landlines, but we never know what we're going to have. So I just keep coming back to the idea is that we need to have redundancy in our communications so that, because once something crazy happens that nobody's quite used to dealing with, people want to know, what do I do? And where do I go to find out? And, and that's really what people want to know, and that's the one common denominator to every kind of a disaster. So I support, obviously, what you guys are doing, you're on the right path, I just encourage you to think along those lines to the extent, and perhaps you already are, I know you are, Buddy, from what you said, and I agree, it's a really, really difficult challenge, it really is. So, thanks, that's all I really wanted to comment.
And we'll have those redundant communications the next time we get together and get a report and talk about this, and if there's any other issues in the meantime, we'll
I don't know.
How much time have I got?
Thank you.
No, 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 I mean, we've done this communication. Thank you.
And now we'll do the winter snow follow-up report.
I guess we had prepared a, Captain Ed Corsi, people on the audience, with the police department, we had prepared a handout, I think, that's been provided already. We're not going to go through the whole thing, it's, it's sort of a blow-by-blow of the entire snow event. I did attend this, this afternoon, a CAG leadership forum that dealt with after-action issues for the snow event for the, for the entire region, and a lot of that information didn't quite get into this document yet, because it's still, still fresh in my mind, but a lot of very interesting experiences that we had here in the city could be extrapolated out to the whole region as a whole. I think right now, what we're going to do is, is briefly, Darryl and I will tell you from our two departments, some of the preparations that we did for the storm, we're not going to belabor that too much, I'm sure you have a lot of questions for us, but we also developed in this document some future considerations, some action items that we want to carry forth in the future. I can say that this was one of those emergencies that we had plenty of notice that it was coming, there were several days spent on some preparations, most of it, in, in the police department at least, most of it was spent on staff preparations. We obtained some four-wheel-drive vehicles, we laid down plans for housing staff to be sure that they would be present throughout the emergency. We stored up some food supplies, because we thought that there would be a high likelihood that a lot of businesses would not be open in the city for a period of time, and that's pretty much how we spent the, the days prior to the, the storm, preparing for the event. We also did put out some information, but I think that would have been one of our, our action items, is that we don't feel we've bombarded the community enough with information about how to be prepared for the event, so that's certainly one of our future considerations. Throughout the, the storms, the police department maintained full patrol staffing of at least four officers on all the shifts. You asked about continuity of operations, the, the nice part about emergency management that police department practiced all the time is continuity of operations. We put 24/7, at, at least a minimal amount of police officers out on the street to handle calls for service. So this is an example of an event where we practiced our continuity of operations plan. We pretty much, I think, through the whole event, we only had one officer in the whole period of time that scratched, couldn't make it in, he, he in fact has a Ford Expedition, couldn't literally get out of his neighborhood, so that was the only piece of overtime we had to spend on the event, was to have another day shift supervisor cover his position. In the police department, we had several lessons learned from this, one was the, the timing of the event hit us in an Achilles heel as far as our, our public information ability, we didn't have any depth in Kathy Plebby's position, we had lost a person who we'd cross-trained on that several months earlier, and Kathy had just the, the worst stroke of luck as far as power and internet access herself, so was very hampered in her ability. She, she got several messages out in, in email form, but not nearly as much as, as we had hoped to get out from her. We relied heavily on TP Alert to get some additional information out, I've been told that some people felt that that was very useful, particularly the people that were out of power, that didn't have internet access, they were able to get at least some information on their cellphones and so forth. So we, we need to identify more equipment for Kathy to get her more, more depth, but also, we're going to be bringing on someone that we feel we can cross-train in that position as well, so even if she's unavailable to make that, we'll have better abilities to get information out. We've also committed to working with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, the, the concept of, of warming centers was discussed at length during the, during the storm, I'll bring it back to kind of an all-hazards terminology, which I think is what Councilmember Schultz was talking about, that, that you can't be preparing for the last war, you have to be preparing for all possible wars. So the term that I would like to, us to explore is evacuee staging areas, and that would be what we, what we would hope to have gotten out of a, a warming center, it's a place for people to gather in a, in a point of transition, trying to determine whether they in fact do need long-term assistance, and then being able to transport them from that location to wherever it is they're going to get that assistance. That was pretty much most of the lessons learned, I, I think Darryl can talk at greater length about snow issues themselves.
Hi. My book Have shuffled a lot of it. Similar to Ed's comments, I mean, preparation is what we do, so although the amounts and the quantities were historic, the day-to-day preparation and the, the kind of routine that we normally go through in preparing for a storm is pretty much like clockwork, we know what we need to do, we need to identify staff, we need to identify shifts, we need to identify supervisors, need to make sure everybody knows their routes, need to make sure the equipment's up, and again, as Ed said, we had some advance notice, for us, we were also coming off a previous weekend storm, where our crews worked for Patty on Saturday previous to the storm, so our main concern, my main concern prior to the storm was fatigue, and what that might do to employee turnout. I was happily, not surprised, because we have a really dedicated staff throughout the city, but we had no issues with employees not reporting, people were there, they knew when they were supposed to be there, we were fully staffed through all our shifts, people worked a pretty horrendous schedule, again, given that the previous weekend, those same employees had lost, you know, worked 12-hour shifts for Saturday and Sunday, so they've been working already throughout the weekend, and then to spend the week kind of getting geared up, making sure we had salt, getting the equipment, you know, fine-tuned to, to do it again. But again, it's what they do, it's what we do, and people get excited about it in a kind of a team effort sort of way. So, we, we put our plan in place, as, as Ed said, in the memo, you've got kind of lays out day by day what we had going on, some of the unique things with this storm is, once we had the second storm hit, we made a decision to bring in contractors, it's the first time that I've worked here that we've had an intense effort with contractors, we've done some a little bit before, there was a storm in the mid-'90s where we had the hals of snow, we hired a couple of loader operators and cleared out places. So that was, that was a new process for us, given that we were already well into the storm, we pretty much were at the mercy of contractors in terms of, you got any equipment available, and we, we lucked out with some existing contractors that we had relationships with from previous work, and we know they had equipment, and they were fully able and prepared to, to show up. We also kind of took baby steps, first we had one contractor with a skid steer and another contractor with one loader, and we said, well, that's working out pretty well, what else you got? So we expanded the, the scope of the contractor assistance based on the effort that we saw in terms of well was needed to really try to widen roads at that point. In the memo, you'll see, we pretty much had single-lane pavement widths within the first 72 hours or so of the storm, but, but our focus with the contractors and with our ongoing effort was to try to clear roadways, clear intersections, provide a little more safety for folks. Of course, as many of you know, we also had the complex issue of the sidewalks, became buried as a result of, as we tried to widen the streets, we then covered safe routes of passage for pedestrians, and that's something that we definitely need to, to evaluate in the future and come up with what, what we can do in, in that regard. In terms of our planning and preparation, what we do is, is first and foremost, make a pass through the streets, and so that's, that's what we do, and then any effort after that, the sidewalks and whatnot, is an, is an add-on, once we've accomplished the necessary first step of a single-lane width through a road. With our operation, we have the 12-hour shifts for the plow operators, and, and then to supplement that, we have the gardens division that oversees the sidewalk clearing operations. So that's done largely through contracted labor, temporary labor brought in to, to do the shovel, we do have a few small pieces of equipment, but generally, it's just a shovel brick, and that happens on city, city-owned sidewalks, and we have a priority list that they go through, always starting at the community center and access to the police department, and those areas are a high priority, and then they work through their list, going towards slopes and hills and city playgrounds and park areas, and then other crosswalk and ramp areas, and the commercial areas, and then the other sidewalks. So all that was pretty much underway. The additional thing that this storm required was inlet clearing, and again, because we have our system on GIS, and we know where those locations are, and we also have photography, what the city engineer did was identify the locations that were lowest and most likely to be in danger of flooding in the event that snow was blocking the inlet. So once we had the roads cleared and the operations underway, we then, the second week post-storm, dispatched three different crews to open up inlets, and I think we had a list of about 50 that we, they opened up with equipment, most of it required skid steers and other pieces of equipment to access, they were, you know, so deeply buried in the snowstorms. The kind of things that my staff and I have talked about since the storm, in terms of, you know, lessons learned, or what we, we do differently, or what we need to think about for the future, that I'd like to, to throw out to you all and, and continue to pursue is, one is the issue of the hydrants, that was a, a big safety concern, hydrants were clearly buried, inaccessible, there is some, there is a, a website through Montgomery County that provides a map of hydrants, but even me as a knowledgeable person had a hard time sort of reading the map and trying to figure out, so I would know where the hydrant was on my block. Some people stepped up individually and just did the hydrant that they know is on their curb, and it was great to see that. One suggestion that came from the staff is, in the event that we have, you know, another forecasted historic storm where we're going to get two or three feet of snow, that we actually put a flag marker on the hydrants and worked that out cooperatively with WSSC or the fire department. And again, it's something in preparation time, wouldn't take someone very long to do, you know, I'm talking about a Velcro strap and a, you know, five-foot rod with a flag on it, maybe an H that, that said hydrant, and it could be something if the, you know, WSSC or the fire department is not prepared to do, we could certainly be able to staff without too much of an impact on our own need for preparation, because a lot of us just hurry up and wait, and make sure everything's ready, and then you wait for the storm to start. Another issue that we've talked about in the past is, there are certain streets in the city where we do have parking on both sides, and in this storm in particular, it would have been helpful in some of those streets, if we had a way to say, we've got an emergency situation, only park on one side. I know access on Maple Avenue is hugely improved by the fact that people stayed off the street longer than this number, since the declaration was in place, in order to enable traffic and buses to go through, and have people started parking, it would have just really jammed things up until we could clear the corridor. So, but one thought is to identify those streets and have a discussion in a public forum with those residents to say, in the event of a serious snow emergency, not a two-inch dusting, but a serious, you know, two-foot or more type of storm, we could be willing to have that designation done, with the understandings that we'd be able to clear the street quicker, you'd be able to transport yourself in and out quicker, we'd have less likely accidents or damage done to anybody's vehicle as a result of having a little more space. So that's a, an idea to think about. We do do some snow hauling and dumping, we haul snow off of Maple Avenue, again, because it's such a major thoroughfare and accessway. We also made a decision to haul snow out of Carroll Avenue, which is a state highway, but they were clearly not going to open up the parking lanes, which were essential to businesses and travel really on that street, so we made a decision to just go in and do it. So, we spent a lot of money on contractors and our own time opening up those parking places in order to enable access to the businesses and
Did they thank us for that?
I, I haven't had a conversation with them about that, I'm sure
I was, I was going to ask if you worked up a bill to send to them.
No.
I think, I think it would be worth just sending it, understanding that they would not be paying, they would call up and say, you've got to be kidding, and we'd say, just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, it's one of those cases where, you know, clearly you're dealing with the largest problem first, and our parking lot would not make it on the radar of state highways list of, of urgent needs, and given the condition of some of the state highways, which I was really surprised, particularly by Flower Avenue, which was in the worst shape I'd ever seen, so something really happened there, where either the contractor that was set up didn't perform in the manner that they, they were supposed to, so
Was that the one that they want us to maintain?
Bruce, is that the one that they want us to maintain?
No, Ethan Allen Avenue is the discussion point on that, and portions of Philadelphia.
So they want to continue to maintain Flower in their good way?
They want us to switch, oh, I'm sorry, to Flower.
Right, right. We talked about that earlier.
Yeah. In light of the snow hauling operation, we also need to have a more formal agreement and a permitted place for snow dumping. We dump snow at the Darwin Avenue parking lot, which historically we've done on a few occasions where we do that. It's not our property, it's park and planning property. And at some point mid- post-storm, they asked us to please refrain from dumping snow on their parking lot, and we did.
They didn't ask you to remove what you put there?
No, no, no. You know, it was clearly a situation where we all knew we were doing the best we could, and everybody was cooperating to the degree they could. They understood our situation. So we need to identify a snow dumping location, whether it's that location or another. That one seems ideal, it's a paved lot, unused in the wintertime. It enables the snow to melt and run off without causing too much of a problem, though that area, of course, is about to undergo construction now, you know, for the next year and a half, would not be the time to do that. But at some point in the future, we might want to have a discussion with them as to what it might take to get that as an allowable use. If not, we need to take a look at other city-owned pieces of property where snow dumping and melting could be done. We considered use of some of our lot, and we could have done that if we were in a need for that. The largest area we have right now, of course, is the area where we process mulch, which in the wintertime is full of ground leaves, so it's not an ideal situation in terms of it's already kind of packed to the gills with leaves. But inside the yard itself, we have some areas where we could, if we had to, store snow. It's a get a pretty small, tight site anyway, so it's not an ideal location. So that is something that we need to come up with and have in a permanent, formal way, whether it's agreement with some other property owner or ourselves, as to how we want to handle that. One situation that we had was property owners, particularly the large apartment owners, and actually some of the school plowing contractors, because of the quantity of snow, they were pushing snow off their parking lots onto Maple Avenue, were creating a huge problem on Maple Avenue with 10- and 12-foot-high mountains of snow. We had the police assist us with notifying those operators that they were not allowed to do that, and talking with some of the apartment managers to have them realize that they needed to keep that snow on their lot. So we need to create some information flow to the apartment managers that that snow dumping can't be taken outside of the lot size. I'm not aware of any other place where that was a problem, other than on Maple Avenue. We have started this on some of the city trucks, outfitting them with GPS units, so we have actual real-time tracking and routing as to where they are. Clearly, it's a benefit, and it's a pretty low cost these days as technology is improving. So we are currently talking to two different firms about outfitting our plow vehicles with a GPS unit. Just provides us a wealth of information in terms of knowing exactly where they've been. You can print it up on a map, in addition to your employees doing daily reports, but, you know, you realize, once you're getting to the fifth and the sixth day of the 12-hour shift, what they recall that they did when they checked their list. You'd have a tendency to, "Yeah, I did that, but was it the first time it snowed or the second time it's snowed or now afterwards?" So it would enable us to have a true, real-time picture of exactly what was done and take a look. We have established zones through the city, though through every storm, we make decisions. You know, if a truck went down in one zone and we realized that that didn't get very well covered in that shift, when the next shift is, we may put two trucks in that zone and take them out of another zone, just to try to catch up, to keep it pretty evenly spread in terms of response. So this would just facilitate our ability to do what we already do now naturally and anecdotally. We'd have a little more fact-based information to that. It also can be used, and we have used it before, in vehicles that it's currently on it. If someone claims that our vehicle was in a certain location, we can identify whether or not it was and at the timeframe, and if there's the potential for damage to be done. For instance, if our truck wasn't anywhere in the area, our insurance company could use that as a way of evaluating claim information. So it, again, just, you know, provides some general and very specific information. And as always, you know, through every storm, you realize that there are training needs. For the most part, our staff are long-timers, you know, the supervisors and some of the plow operators have been in place a long time. But we do have some new employees as well. So with each season, we need to refresh folks' knowledge of the equipment. Sometimes, you know, we intend to put them in one truck, but if a truck goes down, they're there now in another truck, and they may not have the familiarity with some of the bells and whistles, you know, from one truck to the next. So we need to continue to cross-train employees and make sure people are well aware of the types of equipment and operation we have. And then just keep pace with technology. I was at an MML meeting of public work instructors, and someone was extolling the virtues of beet juice as a pre-treatment method, a non-toxic type of alternative. Well, you know, there's always a new widget or a new way or a new something out there that we could explore and take a look at.
I'm sorry, what was the beet juice for?
It can be used a number of ways. It can be used as a pre-treatment on the roads directly. It can be used as a mixture with the salt to extend it. Apparently, it lowers the level of freezing even lower than the salt, so it extends the temperature drop. And it also has a, it's kind of like molasses, so it sort of has a stickiness factor, which stays on the road surface a little bit longer than some of the other liquid treatments, which are, you know, just salt solutions and brine do. So we'll be taking a look at that. We currently use a mixture of sand and salt. We don't use a pure salt mix in our areas. The sand is needed as much for traction on slopes as the salt is for melting, so we do try to reduce the amount of salt through those means. So those are some of the basic takeaways that we came out of this storm with, and be happy to answer any questions or take any other comments or thoughts.
Thanks. It's very helpful to have a list of the avenues to pursue and the areas that you all feel need a little more work. It's very helpful to see that list, because I think that's pretty comprehensive. Do my colleagues have any burning questions? Councilmember Clay.
This is a really thorough after-action report. Thank you for all the thought that you put into everything, especially the flags on the, turn up my microphone. Especially the flags on the hydrants. I have three things I wanted to ask about. One of them is, the little bobcat skid steer things were great, but boy, they do a lot of curb damage, which is kind of a bummer, because we have a lot of nice, new curbs in different places, and they really crack them up. And I noticed downtown cracked-up curbs, which is unfortunate. I don't know if we can have them plow not quite curb-to-curb or something, so they don't crack everything up. The other ones are kind of more policy things, and one is the, you know, the question that you already brought up about whether or not we cover up sidewalks that people have already dug out. I realized that we had lost one person plowing, digging out their sidewalk, and I didn't realize that we'd lost two until I read this report. I think we should have some way to mitigate for that. If we're going to have to do that and load the sidewalks with ice, because that's the easiest thing for us to do to get it out of the street right away, maybe we should contract a contingent of people who will go and then dig them out afterwards, once they had already been dug, and just do that all over the city neighborhood by neighborhood, if we had an extreme storm like this where we had to do that. Because for some people, then, once we plowed the snow right back over their sidewalk that they had, you know, spent all their energy digging out, they were essentially trapped in their houses again. And I had some older people along Lincoln Avenue call who have a slope that goes right up, and we just plowed everything right up to their slope, so they couldn't even, like, come down to really dig themselves out. So I think we, I realize it was an unusual event, but we should maybe spend a little bit more time thinking about how we were going to cope with that. And then the other thing is also about sort of public works policy, which is that there were some places in the Forest Park area where we had streets that, you know, had, you know, cakes of ice on them. And it was interesting talking to the plow driver, because he told me essentially that he had avoided those streets because they had so much ice on them and didn't feel he was able to get them with the truck. And then the longer that he waited and avoided them, the worse that it got. And then the neighbors were yelling at me, so I really encouraged them to go and plow so those people could get out and go to work. And then he went up the street and he ran into somebody's car while I was watching, and then I felt guilty. So my question about that is, I like to avoid feeling guilty, it's a pleasant feeling. Would it make more sense for those streets that are really difficult, like the funny little cul-de-sacs on Cheney or Belford, I can't remember if it's Driver Place, the one that goes up the hill, and even some of the, like Conway that gets so narrow? Would it make sense, rather than leading them to the end, because they're more difficult, to do them first, while the snow is still, you know, loosely packed, or to get a couple rounds on it while there's only a few inches? And it's just something that I would like to throw out there to think about in the mix for next time. Maybe that's a better approach, is to do it first. And the last thing I want to say is, thank you for making Flower a one-way street during the storm. The people really appreciated that, and if we could do that when we have ice storms, I don't know if one way, I guess one way going up the hill or something.
I think we did it one way out.
One way out.
Yeah, you went one way out, you went Garland up.
Yeah, but in any case, making Flower a one-way when there's ice on that road is, the residents really appreciate that, and I would like to see us institute that as a regular thing that we do. It was very helpful.
I think that would be useful to have as part of the discussion about parking. There's a number of streets that lend themselves to that. They're very long blocks and fairly narrow streets.
Flower's 18 feet wide is one of our narrower streets, so.
Yeah, and I was encouraged to see on your list about the possible alternate side of the street parking and putting some signage up to that effect and figuring out the best way to use that to advantage for snow removal, leaf pickup, possibly in some instances, the street cleaner. I think there's all kinds of ways that selective use of that signage could be very helpful.
One of the things that's helpful for folks to keep in mind, and I think for the most point part it worked out, but there's sort of stages through an emergency response. And so initially, all we can do is what we're doing. And then once we get a little bit of breathing room, then we can start triaging and addressing issues like the one-way on Flower and others. And I think that was a collaborative effort with the police department and public works, just, you know, seeing the chaos that was ensuing out there as people were coming head-to-head and not being able to pass each other. Curb-it damage with the skid steers, again, it's kind of the downside of contractors. When you have people in that are, I mean, they were from West Virginia and all over the place. They'd never been to Tacoma Park before. They thought we had a lovely city, and they thought everybody was very nice, but they're really unfamiliar with our infrastructure. So it is part of the downside, and hopefully it'll be very rare when those come in. It's a staff training is the best way to address the issue that happened in Conway, and unfortunately, the staff person, you know, was fairly new at the response. But we do have pieces of equipment that need to go to certain areas, and one of the difficulties in this particular storm, first, especially the first one, is that the loader, which is generally has a route to do, was busy pulling out our stuck trucks. So they couldn't get to the areas that they were supposed to get to because our equipment was just all over the place. The second storm was less, we had less of that problem, it was just an entirely different type of snow. So our loader and our skid steer could get out and around and do what they were assigned to do a little better, so we had a little mix of things. And that happens in any event, you get different kinds of breakdowns with equipment. But yet better training and better identification of which areas need to have what equipment and to the degree that people can be reassigned to similar zones. So if we were to put that guy back in that zone again next time around, he wouldn't make some of the same decisions that he made the first time. So, you know, just, it's a continual educational effort, and as they say, each snowstorm is a little bit different, even though it looks all the same to everybody else. There's some unique features in it.
And Councilmember Ray, and then I want to go to the break so we can get to the last budget item, and any questions that are left over, maybe we can address them during the break.
Sure. So I did have the pleasure of riding around in a snow plow after Bruce did it as well, so I did get a good understanding of the limitations, actually, of what they're out there working on, and learned a lot about snow plows. I thought that was helpful. So the first thing I'll just say is, any of my comments, you know, for every thing I think we need to work on, you know, we did 100 things correctly, so it's just, I don't want to get too focused on the negative. But just like I think we're going to look at the narrow streets and doing one-side parking, I think we need to look at the high-volume streets, because Councilmember Clay alluded to this also, is you take Maple, where it's both high walking traffic and high car traffic. And so I think, you know, if we're going to, maybe we need to clear curb-to-curb earlier or, I'm not sure what the arrangement is, but I think we kind of need to assess where those few pockets are and have an active plan, because what happened on Maple, people actually did a very good job clearing the sidewalks, and we did a pretty good job when no one was parked there of the bus being able to go by and then cars going, being able to go by. But then at some point, we decided we need to really do curb-to-curb, and then the sidewalks got buried, and then they came back to try and rectify it. And I'm not sure what hap, I think between the communication of maybe it's contractors, but what we wanted to have happen versus what really was happening on the street was very different for residents. And I think the same was true on Holly, where stuff got dumped on people's front yards. Maybe that's a training issue or a contractor issue. But that, I think, you know, people only are appreciative of the last great thing you did for them, right? And so they forget all the great stuff, and they remember that, you know, their azalea bush got crushed or whatever. So, yeah, I think that those issues kind of need to get worked out. The one other thing I think hasn't been mentioned is this issue of like whether we're going to do traffic control around the loader when it's basically digging out big piles or dumping, you know, it's basically stationary working, it's moving back and forth in the street. Because one of my constituents, her car got hit by the loader when she thought it was okay to go by, and she wasn't the wrong, I think, but I had a similar situation where I thought it was okay to go by, and I fortunately goose-ed it to go by after the loader had moved again. But I think if there was somebody there directing traffic, or if we're not going to do that, we need to figure out a way to, you know, notify people about what's going on or have better instruction for the loader operators. So those are kind of the three things.
If I may make a comment. I connect with Captain Kersey. You were talking about warming shelters or staging shelters, whatever it's called. I'm exploring it at present time. I'm investigating what needs to be done with all the rules and regulations. And I will find one issue which needs to be clarified, this issue of liability. And this has to be clarified, and I will come back to talk about it.
I do want to say one thing on that. I think we all, our approach was right, that it's the county has the main responsibility for shelters.
That's true.
And our role, if anything, would be to connect people to those shelters.
And the county has opened three shelters, one in Low County, one in Middle County, one in Upper County, and they expected you to be able to get there. Or call the emergency number, they would have picked you up.
Yeah, I think more importantly, and this was a subject talked at this afternoon's COG leadership forum, to some extent, was the disconnect between the concepts of whether sheltering was the idea or whether sheltering in place was the idea. And predominantly, the message by all of the local governments in the Washington area was that the concept of sheltering in place was the preferred method of handling this emergency, even if that meant three or four days without heat. Most people weathered that out three or four days without heat. Very few people went to the very few shelters that were open in the region.
Forty-five people.
There were, at the max, 45 people in Montgomery County that attended any of the three shelters, and most of those were not people coming directly from their house to a shelter. They were a bunch of people that were discharged from hospitals, that couldn't get back to their houses, or medical need types that had to be in a power-producing environment. By far, and as you can see in this report, somewhere around 200,000, 250,000 people in Montgomery County were without power at one point. So you see a huge disconnect there. I think regionally, there was some frustration that the message of sheltering in place was not hammered enough into the general populace, and that was what was expected in this event.
I think communications was the other difficult thing, that, you know, the shelters were underutilized, but there were a lot of people who didn't know they were even available. Anyways, it does for another night.
Okay. And on that note, thank you, and we'll take a break, and we'll come back with another budget presentation. If we can try and start up again at- If we can try and start up again at 10:00 on the clock in here, which is about seven minutes.
Just change your name to Opal and you're all set.
If you come over here, you can see.
I was going to say, I might have to. You ready?
It's my pleasure this evening to introduce the proposed budget for FY 2011. The annual budget sets forth the manner in which services will be delivered during the fiscal year, and from my perspective, it's the most important action that the city council takes every year. Usually, this is the point in the presentation where I will say that this is the beginning of the council's budget process. In actuality, the council has had a number of discussions this fiscal year that were very helpful to me in putting together the budget. There was a work session last November in which the council covered a number of issues, one of which was the state retirement plan deficit that you talked about earlier this evening. You also provided direction at that work session to the staff regarding the CSafe program as well as a police accreditation. Obviously, one of the major topics of discussion during this fiscal year has been the public works facility, and the council held a number of work sessions regarding that project, both in terms of the proposed construction budget and how the project would be financed. And as part of that discussion, the council also had some deliberations regarding sanitation services and how those would be provided to Tacoma Park residents going forward. Before actually getting into the nuts and bolts of the FY 2011 proposed budget, just wanted to touch on a couple major budgetary issues, certainly the economic downturn, property assessments, the public works facility renovation, and personnel cost. I think everyone's painfully aware of what's been happening with the economy, both the state and the county are dealing with structural deficits and have been for some time. Some of the city's key revenue sources come from the state and counties, certainly as they struggle to balance their own budgets, that has had an impact on us already. As the council will recall, in the late summer, the Maryland Board of Public Works made significant cuts in the municipal share of highway user revenues, 90% to be exact, and also made a 35% reduction in the share of state police aid that is given to municipalities. That resulted in a revenue loss this fiscal year of about $577,000. All across the nation, there has been a downturn in the housing market, certainly there are certain spots that have not suffered as much. I have a colleague who is the manager of one of the suburbs of Las Vegas, and happened to talk to him fairly recently, and he has one of every four homes in his community is in some stage of foreclosure. We have certainly seen some forecoages in Tacoma Park, but thankfully, nothing near that level. The federal government, to try to spur the economy, has kept income fixed security rates very low, that has a direct impact on how much the city can earn off its investment portfolio. A couple years ago, we were probably making somewhere around $350,000 from investment returns. This year, we are projecting to make about $76,000. And last but not least, the stock market downturn, I think most of us have probably seen some decline in our own personal portfolios, and certainly the downturn in the stock market has also impacted the valuation of the pension plan assets, both the city's own police pension plan as well as the state retirement plan. Property assessments, all property in Maryland is reassessed on a triennial basis, that should read, not calendar 2010, but fiscal year 2010, and due to the small, compact size of Tacoma Park, all property in the city has been reassessed this fiscal year. Our gross assessable real property base has fallen by 10%. One of the things that I've always found unique about Maryland is the idea of a state homestead property tax credit, and what it essentially does is limits the increase in taxable assessments to 10% for certain residential property owners. So what that will basically do is sort of delay the impact of rapidly escalating property values. Despite the 10% fall in the gross assessable base, the city's net assessable base is actually increasing, and the reason for that is directly attributable to the state homestead property tax credit. With the decline in property values, the amount of the credits projected for next fiscal year has similarly fallen, so the net effect of that is that our net base has increased. To kind of put it in perspective, last fiscal year, or the current fiscal year, the state homestead property tax credits were estimated to be in the range of $366 million. Based on the information we have gotten from the state, the estimated state property tax credits for next fiscal year are around $95 million. So even though our base has fallen, the amount of the credits has fallen further, resulting in a net increase in the base. The public works facility renovation, I won't spend a lot of time on this because I know the council is very familiar with the project. Certainly, I think when you're seeing losses in revenues in other areas, I think it can call into question, why do a capital project now, and the council itself debated that during this fiscal year. It is certainly an opportune time to do capital projects, I think you see the county not slowing down some of its capital work as well. Right now, financing rates are very low, as we talked about earlier this evening, with the general obligation bonds for the state retirement plan, and it's a strong bidding climate. With the downturn in the housing market and just downturn in construction generally, contractors are hungry, and they will give good prices. Anyone who has seen the public works facility, it's definitely in poor shape, it was built in the 1950s. Other than the construction of the salt dome, virtually no work has been done on that facility since the 1950s. We have drainage problems, it's poorly insulated, we have one component of the facility, the sanitation base, that is actually structurally deficient and needs to be torn down. The project is currently out to bid, construction is projected to begin in either June or July, the construction timeframe is estimated to be about a year, so if that schedule holds, virtually all the construction will take place during fiscal year 11. The proposed budget includes $3.2 million for that project, and it will be paid for as the council is aware through a combination of bond and cash financing. Obviously, we're a service industry, so the single largest part of the city's operating cost is personnel. I just wanted to kind of recap a couple issues for the council. We've had a lot of discussion over the past few years regarding the police employee's retirement plan. As you may recall from last year's budget discussions and probably the year before that, the plan has experienced an extraordinarily high rate of disability since its inception. We have had discussions with Local 400, the bargaining unit that represents these sworn police officers, as well as with the pension board. In 2009, the city council did approve an amendment to the plan to attempt to deal with the high rate of disability, and I'm pleased to tell the council that at least for next year, the contribution rate has effectively stabilized. It will increase from 34.7% to 34.82, so it will remain relatively flat for next year, which is certainly a pleasant change of pace from what we've been seeing over the last few fiscal years. The state retirement and pension system covers the non-sworn staff members, they have been impacted by the downturn in the market, just like all pension plans have. We have been notified that there will be a significant increase in the contribution rate for FY 2011, and the financial impact of that increased contribution rate based on current staffing levels is over $200,000. Workers' compensation insurance, we are currently a member of the county insurance pool. We have been notified, as have other municipalities, that there will be a significant increase in pool rates. If we were to stay with the pool, that would result in an additional cost to the city of about $190,000 for FY 11. Needless to say, that wasn't tenable, and so the staff started exploring other options. We will soon be bringing forward a recommendation to the council, but I anticipate that we will change carriers in FY 2011 and that we will be going to the interworkers fund. Employee health insurance, nothing significant to report this evening, we'll be getting our renewal rates. This is, obviously has been and will continue to be, a major driver of our personnel cost, with generally over time, the city, like other employers, has experienced double-digit rate increases. The budget that has been submitted to the council contemplates an FTE reduction of 8.11. To put that in perspective, that equates to just over 5% of the current year full-time equivalents. These reductions would take place across all city departments. The FTE reductions come from a number of places, there are some positions which are filled and are being proposed for elimination, there are other positions that are currently full-time that I am recommending to the council be made part-time, and then there are other positions that would just be eliminated, in some cases, that was a cost-cutting measure proposed by the department, and in others, we are recommending a change in the operating hours of certain city facilities, including this building. And so if the building is not open on Sunday, for example, we don't need staff to be on site. My proposed budget also recommends that no wage, merit, or step increases be given to any city employee. In making these recommendations, I certainly recognize that they will impact every member of the city staff, and I want to assure the council and the employees that these recommendations are not made lightly. I think we are in a period of restructuring in government that I haven't seen since probably the mid-1980s, when I was first starting in local government. Certainly, one of my goals as a city manager was to basically avoid further layoffs of city staff. Getting kind of to the mechanics of the FY 2011 budget, there will be four funds this year, the general fund, the stormwater management fund, the special revenue funds, and the speed camera fund. We are not anticipating any financial activity related to the community center, so you will not see a community center fund in the FY 11 budget. Kind of started the big picture, and then I'll work down to each of the funds. Total revenues for all funds is projected to be $21.27 million, total expenditures $25.05. Obviously, revenues are less than expenditures. The variance will be made up of bond proceeds, we are expecting to finalize the financing for the public works facility this fiscal year. Those bond proceeds will basically just fall to fund balance and will be actually expended in FY 11. The city does have an equipment replacement reserve, where we plan for the eventual replacement of equipment by setting aside money every year. This year's budget includes about $730,000 in items to be purchased from the equipment replacement reserve, and then there will be monies taken from the general fund fund balance for non-recurring projects, including the public works facility renovation. The general fund is the mechanism that the city uses to track financial activities related to the city's daily operations, this is sanitation service, police service, library services. The general fund is also where we track our debt service payments and where we record activities related to capital. The general fund overview, revenues are projected to be $19.14 million, expenditures $22.55. We sort of already talked about this, the budget does contemplate the use of fund balance, as I've already mentioned, the public works facility bond proceeds, and the withdrawal from the equipment replacement reserve. General fund revenues, I am recommending to the city council that there be no change in the real property tax rate, it is currently 58 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. One of the things that I gave serious consideration to in putting together this budget is the reality that many of our property owners, our residents, are also dealing with tough financial times. Many of them have lost jobs, many of them aren't getting raises, so I at least wanted to try to make an effort not to increase the tax rate. This will likely impact people in very different ways, based on some of the assessment data I've looked at. There are certainly lots of folks in the city who would probably see a decrease in what they're paying in real property taxes, at least the city's share of it. Others, assessments, by the time you factor in the homestead property tax credit, are staying relatively constant, and there certainly are property owners in the city who have experienced increase in assessments, and based on the data I've looked at, that's particularly true of some commercial properties and some of the large apartment complexes in the city. The constant yield tax rate is .5663. I think one of the things we've seen over the last few years is sort of a narrowing of the gap between the city's own property tax rate and the constant yield tax rate. Real property taxes for FY 11 are estimated to comprise 57% of fund revenues, and for those of you who've been on the council sometime, that number has continued to grow over the last few years, and I think that's a reflection of both the growth in property values in prior years and the fact that we're seeing declines in some other areas.
We got it down into the 30s.
I think since I, when I started, I believe, Mayor, it was just under 50% or somewhere in that range.
But it used to be in the high 30s.
Yeah. And I think that's probably a factor of a couple things, one, we're primarily residential community, and secondly, in Maryland, unlike some other states, there's not very many ways for municipalities to raise money. Kind of just a couple points about general fund revenues. As I mentioned earlier, we were whacked by the state to the tune of 90% in highway user revenues in the late summer, those reductions are carrying forward into FY 11. Similarly, the cut in state police protection aid will carry forward as well. Income taxes are something that Yvonne DeBrooks, our finance director, and I obsess about, and who's led Loise laughing because I drag anyone in to look at projections. Notoriously difficult to predict, what we are seeing so far this year is that they are underperforming, to say the least, based on the projections that are in the budget. We are estimating that income taxes this year will come in approximately $300,000 under budget. I think it's probably a factor of mostly the downturn in the economy, but several years ago, the state legislature also enacted a change in how income taxes are calculated and paid by individuals in the state. We work closely with the chief economist from Montgomery County in coming up with our projections, he's always been very, very helpful. So, the bad news is, we're expecting income taxes to underperform this year to the tune of $300,000. We are expecting a slight recovery for FY 2011. Other things of note about general fund revenues, tax duplication payments will be impacted most likely by the county budget, the county executive's proposed budget includes a 5% reduction in tax duplication payments, that equates to about a $150,000 revenue loss for the city. One of the things we're obviously concerned about and are going to watch closely is what the county council does. As the county tries to deal with its own structural deficit, we're hoping that 5% holds and that it doesn't become an even greater cut. As I mentioned earlier, our investment revenues have suffered significantly due to the low interest rates. We also have several sources of revenue that are tied directly to our property values, and both of the ones listed are from the county. There is a provision in the county code which provides Tacoma Park with a payment for a county police rebate, this is not the tax duplication payment. It is tied directly to our property values, and I might need Yvonne to help me out here, but I think we are looking at a revenue loss, I believe, of about $137,000 from that source for FY 11 because of the decline in the city's property values. We'll see also a decline in our library aid from the county because of the property value decline. Terms of general fund expenditures, the proposed budget does include a continuation of the state property tax credit supplement, this is something the city has done for years, and over a period of time, the city has increased the supplement from, I believe, Mayor may need to help me out, I think at the lowest point, it was 30%.
15.
15. I think it was 30 when I started in 2004, and shortly after I started, the council raised it to 50%. This is, the state property tax credit is a program to benefit low and moderate income homeowners, it has some other requirements and restrictions regarding assessment levels, but the city for a long time has tried to gear some of its property tax relief through this program, and the proposed budget contemplates that that will continue. The proposed budget also includes continued financial support for a number of organizations, the Independence Day Committee, Main Street Tacoma, the Crossroads Farmers Market, and the Small Community Grant Program, which was something the council actually began this year. Given the newness of the program, I didn't want to totally eliminate it, but the funding for the program has been reduced by 50% as proposed. The stormwater management fund, as the name implies, it is the mechanism that we use to track financial activity related to our stormwater management system. The primary revenue source is a fee-based system, and the city's structure provides for a base rate that is tied to a single-family residential lot. The proposed budget does not contemplate any change in the base rate of $48, that's once again, the single-family rate, and that rate has been in effect since, I believe, FY 2007. In terms of expenditures for this fund, they're just over $500,000. In terms of expenditures for this fund, they're just over $500,000. As a reminder, this fund does cover the cost of certain personnel. It's half of the personnel cost for the city engineer and .25 FTE, which is an administrative employee in public works. Typically, the expenditures in this fund are kind of maintenance, and any capital involves actual infrastructure, you know, construction of pipes, inlets, things of that nature. This year, we are proposing to purchase a street sweeper from the Stormwater Management Fund.
And that's a replacement of the existing?
Yes. Special revenue funds, this is the way that we account for grant-funded projects. Some of you may recognize that the expenditure level of just about $729,000 is a little less than what we have seen over the years, and some of that is a reflection of the fact that many of the grant programs that the city has relied on are drying up because of financial constraints at other levels of government. In November, when we talked about the police accreditation program, the council concurred with the chief's recommendation to no longer pursue accreditation, but to essentially follow its guidelines. One of the things we shared with the council at that time is that we did have a funding source to continue the work of that employee who was formerly the accreditation officer, and for the first time, you see an FTE in the special revenue funds, and that's basically this 20-hour-a-week employee. Other FY 2011 projects include a continuation of the city's safe routes to school activities. There will continue to be educational programmatic efforts through that grant program, as well as infrastructure projects, specifically the construction of sidewalks. The city received $100,000 through the Community Legacy Program to assist with the renovation and expansion of a commercial property, which is at the corner of Piney Branch Road and Flower. Through the CDBG funding, we will continue to provide funding for weekly food distributions to low and moderate-income households and schoolchildren. Speed Camera Fund was established in fiscal year 2009. Its expenditures must promote public safety, so it cannot be used to fund sanitation service, street work, things of that nature. We have seen a decline in revenue since the program got underway. Part of that, I think, may be attributable to increased driver compliance. Certainly, the state legislation enacted in 2009 has had a major impact. It changed the number of miles per hour that triggers the issuance of a citation. We are projecting revenues of about $960,000 next fiscal year, expenditures of about $1.26 million, and the use of fund balance to the tune of about $300,000. During this fiscal year, the council did approve the allocation of certain personnel costs to the Speed Camera Fund. For FY 11, there will be three FTEs paid out of this fund. It is a police officer who basically helps administer the program. There is a civilian employee who assists the officer, and then the council had approved the creation of a traffic officer position, which is an eligible expenditure through the Speed Camera Program. One of the largest expenses you'll see in the budget for the Speed Camera Fund is the required contractual payment to the program vendor. There is $75,000 included for public safety expenditures, and these are items such as the e-citation program that you all approved fairly recently. You can do LiDAR, radar guns, things of that nature. The proposed budget also includes $500,000 for sidewalk and other capital projects. When you have an opportunity to review your budget binders, what you will see is if these expenditures all follow through, there will be a fund balance left at the end of FY 2011. We obviously haven't undertaken capital projects, so we, you know, are trying to get a handle on what kind of staffing resources might be needed. Assuming that, you know, things are going well, I think it's feasible for us to possibly come back to the council and increase that allocation for capital. We just want to make sure that whatever we undertake, that we can handle well. The equipment replacement reserve, as I mentioned earlier, this is the, a reserved part of the fund balance where the city sets aside money for the eventual replacement of equipment. Prior to my tenure with the city, I had gone back and done some research when I got here, and there were a number of years where the city did not contribute. I'm presuming that was due to fiscal constraints or contributed a very nominal amount. During my tenure as city manager, made a concerted effort to make recommendations to the council to fund this. I think this is one of those things where governments often make a mistake, and they don't keep up their capital, they don't prepare for its eventual replacement, and then the day comes where it needs to be replaced and you don't have the funding. I am recommending this year, for next year, a contribution of $1 million. The FY 2011 operating revenues are insufficient to support that contribution, so what the budget contemplates is a transfer from unreserved to reserved fund balance. Next steps, there will be public hearings next Monday. Those public hearings, as the mayor mentioned earlier this evening, will be on the proposed FY 2011 budget, as well as the constant yield tax rate, and the council will then begin its deliberations and hold a number of work sessions during the months of April and May. As I wrap up, I guess one thing I would like to do is just to take this opportunity to publicly express my appreciation to the members of the management team and countless other members of the city staff. Obviously, given the financial picture, this was a very difficult budget to put together. I know I pushed a lot of the folks pretty hard in terms of answering questions, and certainly, it was not a surprise to me that they rose to the challenge. So this is literally probably the one thing that happens every year, where every single member of the city staff and every single department contributes in some way, and I would just like to thank them for the assistance they have given me in getting us to this point this evening. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
It's good because I can't figure it out. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for...
I just wanted to remind us what 1 percent of the tax rate is. Is it $190,000 roughly, or $180,000 in that ballpark?
Yeah, it's roughly around that.
Thank you for all the hard work. I know it was probably your most difficult budget, and I know that it's very hard for everybody to contemplate a reduction in city staff. This is something that nobody wants to do, nobody looks forward to doing, but I think the financial situation demands it, and I appreciate the amount of thought and effort that you've put in in trying to come up with the best way to do that, to look at the areas that are the most critical to continue to fund and to make sure that the proposed reductions are as fair and equitable as you can make them. And I think we'll get into some of those, some of those issues and other issues as we go forward with the budget. We'll have a number of work sessions. First one is next Monday night, and if there are no further questions.
I would just say, I should review the budget prior to next Monday. If there's any questions that you have, please don't hesitate to contact me, or if there's information that is not included in the budget document that you would like, please just let me know.
And I know that we haven't, at least in your meetings with me, haven't yet got to the point of saying which departments or which sections of the budget we're going to deal with first, but my colleagues might appreciate knowing which sections we're going to deal with next week, so that if you want to concentrate the areas that you look at the budget in those areas, then you'll be prepared next week, and some of the later areas can wait.
We will get that out to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
George.
It's 32, 33.